It's seven o'clock. I would like to thank you all for coming. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bobby, can we have the roll call, please?
Sure.
Kellogg?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Poland?
Here.
Hofstadter?
Here.
Khan?
Here.
Okay. Thank you all for coming. We have, we've been changing around the schedule a little bit, but I think we've got it right where we want it right now, just so you know. So, some community events that I wanted to highlight. This Thursday is Our Town Millersburg from founding to eighteen, nineteen hundred, eighteen hundred. From founding to nineteen hundred at the American Hall at 7:00 PM. We are expecting a lot of people, so if you can't make it, it will be shown live on WKLM's YouTube page. So wherever we watch the Knights Football, that's where you get on and watch Our Town Millersburg. The O D N R tree planting will be April 9th at 1:00.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
That moved.
Oh, did it? Okay, nineteenth. At 1:00. May 17th is the Peace Officer Memorial at the Courthouse at 2:00. May 18th is Vintage in the Village and the Lions Club Chicken Barbecue, so that's a new addition to our calendar. We're excited about that. And another thing that, that got added was June 15th will be a Walk in the Past, the Oak Hill Cemetery Tour. If you remember, Debbie Klein came last year and talked to us about having people portraying, I guess you would call them the residents of Oak Hill, former residents of Millersburg. So that will be on June 15th. I talked with Chief this week about the Bicentennial Parade, and I will be taking some of those information and suggestions to the Bicentennial Committee Meeting, which is April the 17th, right? Arnie met with Marlia on Thursday, early afternoon. We gave her all the information for the mural, and we are expecting her to give us some renderings this Wednesday. So I should have something for you guys to look at at the next council meeting as far as what the mural will, will look like or if we want to change anything. So that, that's coming up. I would like to personally welcome our new HDM Director, Taylor Sigler. She is here tonight, and she is going to introduce herself to you all.
Hello, I'm Taylor Sigler, and as Kelly said, I'm the new Executive Director for HDM. I come from the Holmes County Chamber of Commerce. I worked there for a couple of years, and then I made a move over to HDM. So it was super exciting, and I'm super glad to be here. Just really, really excited and passionate about the community. Can't wait to meet together to see what we can do. And yeah, we've got a couple of exciting things coming up. It's great.
We're excited. We're excited. You bring a lot of energy, and we love that.
Good, thank you. And then Robin, my current President, she's also here with me, so.
Welcome, Robin.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
And then I also have one request. Since we planned Vintage in the Village on Saturday, May 18th, I would like to request to shut down, I wrote it down, hang on. Okay, so to close, South Monroe from East Jackson to East Adams, and then North Monroe from Jackson to East Clinton, and then Court Street, also just right behind the courthouse there, so.
Okay. All right. Any questions? We have a motion?
I have a motion.
I'll second.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Poland?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Aye.
You're good to go, Taylor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes?
Second, Khan.
Poland?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Any additions or corrections? Do we have a motion to pass?
So moved. Second.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
And Khan.
Aye.
All right, Bill Resolution 2024-06. Are there any questions on the bills totaling $201,594.94? Do we have a motion to pay?
I'll make a motion to pay, Khan.
I'll second that.
Khan?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Poland?
Aye.
And Hofstadter?
Aye.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, Nate, what have you got for us?
Thank you. I had a call. All right, so April, I guess I'll start out by saying the Planning and Zoning Meeting bumped back a week. With spring break being next week, I wasn't going to be here, and there were some others that had some conflicts. So we bumped it back a week. So April 10th, we're going to review the Pitmasters Pizzeria, signed variants, Herschbrigger on Port Washington. Since the ordinance passed for the freight, use of freight containers, the shipping containers, he's submitted his application to get that fully approved now. And then also, as a result of the discussion we had at the Strategic Plan, or whatever, Strategic Initiative Meeting, C F Planning and Zoning wants to recommend to this Board revision of the minimum square footage requirement for single-family dwellings. This obviously relates to the tiny homes that we've discussed multiple times. There's been more and more variances coming in for those. We wanted to see if just lowering that, that standard would make more sense. You should have all, a couple of weeks ago, got a copy of the Worcester Road Speed Study, and Mr. Hoffman's here with us from, from ODOT tonight. So wanted to rekindle that discussion. Has there, I assume everybody's had a chance to review the study. Is there any questions or thoughts on that while we get started?
I had a question. From our last discussion, you said there were changes? We were, when we talked about the South. I, I, I thought that when we discussed the speed limits the last time, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I think so. I, I think the discussion was extending, you know, there was some discussion about extending the twenty, the Business District. Okay. Beyond what the intent of the code was. Is that accurate? I, after the, that last meeting, we had some further discussion that.
We were talking Business District and Urban District, the definitions of those. I think I sent an order diagram of kind of the intent of what the Business District was in the downtown area, which is where it's 25 now, pretty much models what you have in the village.
Right. So I think that was what it was, just clarifying more that the intent isn't to say go three miles out, you know, with your Business District.
I think the other issue on that too is that the nineteen ninety-six speed study says thirty-five, I'm sorry, says that thirty-five was the appropriate speed limit from sand run to angle runner. And in order, Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, in order to not follow that speed study, we'd have to have another speed study that said otherwise.
Right, yes. Since that speed study wasn't done because it was an urban definition, thirty-five miles per hour, it was actually a speed study. You'd have to do a speed study to reevaluate the one done twenty-five years ago.
What was that location again? I'm sorry.
See, that's how.
The South, okay. So we did it, we, we redid the speed study to the South.
Not that far.
Oh, not that far.
The Business District here where it's twenty-five at the beginning of that speed study.
Okay, okay.
The gap where.
Okay.
I think that one proposed thirdly for a portion of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it went basically to South Monroe Extension.
Yeah, to the end there, near Nagy's.
So I think to get back on, I, I think what the discussion back then was, was confirming the boundaries of the Business District are where we want them, and then determining what you want to do with North, North Clay, North and Worcester Road, and then South Clay, South Washington. I think east-west, we were all in agreement to just verify the proper signage is where it should be, and then they're good.
So is it still true that we can extend the twenty-five mile per hour Business District up to the curve at Elm Street without?
That one, extending it up there, you have to do the, you know, get your boundaries and then figure out if you have fifty percent businesses between those limits. But I think part of that conversation was there's an existing study from nineteen fifty-six that says the north end of town is documented at twenty-five. That one's still in place. And I think that was where, we didn't want to have a gap there of like seven hundred feet where it was twenty-five, and then thirty-five to twenty-five. We could have, because of, to make it continuous there, we could have done something to make it twenty-five. But one of your new study looks like the north end is probably going to be higher than that, so I don't think that is going to play out to, to make it continuous.
So for, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So from the curve on North Clay to the curve on South Clay, we were talking about that being twenty-five.
Extending your business.
Before. That's what we were talking about before, because Chief had concerns about the curve north, to the north. And then we had concerns about the curve in the south. And we talked about the curve that, where South Clay and, and Washington meet, and then the curve here to the north, and have that much of the street be twenty-five, that, that much, and then we would discuss out.
To do that, I think you'll need to, you know, get your real estate, figure out your fundages, how much is business, how much is not business.
I think we did that.
The, the north from the square to Wool Street was good. And then I, I don't remember on the south.
On the south.
And that's where we wanted to end the twenty-five at least until we had the new speed study done, the stat curve, right?
But I think when I did this, I went from. I think I went from the square to the corporation limit, so I don't, I don't know that I can break out from the square to the Y.
Sort of a neat.
Off, you know, without looking at it again.
I mean, the hospitals there. I was just talking about to the north. Let's do the north first.
Okay.
And relocate at the curve.
Yes.
Twenty-five and fifty percent.
Yes.
So that's done.
That part, I'm ninety-nine percent confident that was good. The south, I don't remember.
And you can believe me, I'm not trying to throw, I'm not trying to mention anything, but, okay, we have a, now we have a speed study on that. So my question today, I guess, is can we trump that speed study by saying, well, it's Business District, so it should be twenty-five, even though the speed study says it should be thirty-five plus?
So I think the answer to that is yes, you can. So I've got the, this is the flow.
I, I looked at that this afternoon.
Yeah, yeah. So the way it starts here is, you know, speed zone process for local railways, requests for speed zone initiated. So you guys have done that, done your study, you've talked to me, kind of keep the ball rolling, I'm just here for guidance. So ODOT checks speed zone master list for previous generalized speed zone, and/or reviews statutory speed limits. We've done all that, and we went through all of Millersburg, figured out where all the speed limits were. And then, so the next question is, is the prima facie speed limit assigned requested speed? And that's where we're getting into these definitions of urban and business, where it goes from fifty is if it's neither, thirty-five if it's urban, and twenty-five if it's business. So if you can justify from the higher vice code that this is business from the curve of the curve, then it is the prima facie speed limit in speeds that, so, speed zone study not required, and you can assign number of. Or if it doesn't, that's where this local agency wants to pursue speed limit revisions, and then that's where you perform a speed zone study and get down that path.
But the speed study we just did did not include to the curve, right? It started at the curve.
Well, it started at, they're saying one fourteen North Clay, but it's more, I, I'm not sure what one fourteen.
They were on Worcester Road, weren't they? I saw them out there.
Yeah, it went on.
Yeah, it went, it went the whole way.
That's where the people were actually doing the survey.
Where's one fourteen?
It's like the Education Foundation is one oh one, and then Baker Surveying is one thirty-eight, so I don't know where they got the one fourteen from. It starts right there around Clint, just north of Clinton Street.
How many different speed limits did we want through the village? I thought there was also twenty-five, thirty, thirty, I mean, weren't we wanting to also have it be one speed limit?
Well, I, I don't know that the.
I mean, Tom Vaughn had an email that was sent out that I think that he, I think he should read, the, the feedback he got from people in the, I mean, because there was something that he had concerns about that, that I think should be addressed to the public.
I think the Worcester Road, the speed study supports what the complaints were, that it shouldn't be twenty-five miles an hour the whole way up Worcester Road from, I mean, the whole way. And it shouldn't be twenty-five south, that was the complaint.
Well, one of the other things was that Brad couldn't believe was when I told him you got one side of the road with one speed limit, another side of the road with another speed limit. If, do you understand that sometimes if you put in your DPS thing that it'll tell you a different speed limit than what it is? And, I mean, I just think there should be continuity, and I think that you address people complaining about stuff. So I think that, you know, that was an email that you sent, so I think, so you should read that. I think that should be a concern in the public.
Yeah, go ahead.
Specifically with the regards to the speed limits on the opposite side of the road. So ODOT, a lot of times, will find that signs get knocked over at some point. It might be in the middle of night, and they don't even know about it, and they don't get pulled back up. My personal, this is just opinion, I don't know exactly what's happened here. I believe whatever the twenty-five or thirty-five would have been heading out of town to the south, I think at some point that came down. I think where you have a twenty-five sign coming to the north on the south end is where the Business District border was. And I think the sign just came down. I think it's always been thirty-five. Again, that's without doing the historical records. I have no documentation, one way or the other, but I think that's what happened there. At some point it got, came down, and it never got pulled back up. So I don't think, yeah, often, I think it's currently posted that way because of what signs are up, but I don't think that's actually what it was intended to be.
When the signs come down, whose responsibility is it to make sure they go back up?
It's a combination of the biller and ODOT. You have signed an MR six eighty-nine form, which allows ODOT to come in and do the center line striking, and also any regulatory or warning signs, so the yellow signs, but it needs to be a request to us, so you tell us about it, we don't necessarily know that you're doing it.
Typically, we do them in, in-house, but if we find out that there was an accident, and they let us know the sign got knocked down, we'll replace it.
And you can absolutely do that, too.
So it's not uncommon, if you see a twenty-five mile per hour speed, speed limit sign heading north, wherever, and a thirty-five coming the opposite direction, somebody should call ODOT. That, that, that's not a typical, logical way to put a sign up, correct? Because it's in the same territory, it's in the same location. So if you see speed limit signs that vary, somebody should be making a phone call to ODOT, basically.
Or the jurisdiction.
Or the jurisdiction in the village, or where it's located.
One, I guess, clarification. Typically, that is the case. Pet peeve of mine is that there should be the same speed limit on both sides of the road. There is a scenario where it could be the opposite, and that's if you have the center line of the roadway being different jurisdictions on the left and right side of the road. Sometimes you have that, where the right side of the road may be a villages, and the left side's outside the corporation limit, so it's ODOT. In that situation, from the prima facie speed limit, it might be opposite. So you have technically two speed limits, and there's four ways you can remedy that. Way one is if we agree, we can adopt the municipalities. Way two is we can adopt ODOT. Way three is we don't agree, I guess, way three is we do agree on something between the two, maybe forty or forty-five. And way four is we don't agree, and we're both keeping them as we want. We recently had this outside of Leesville where we had a split, and ODOT agreed thirty-five was the safer speed, and we dropped our fifty-five down to thirty-five.
But you would never have it inside one village, or you should not?
Typically, no.
Okay.
Pretty neat situation for that to happen.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, I still consider the hospital almost all the way south to the curve as business. Because you've got the hospital, you've got the Amish house, you've got the guest house, you've got Village Motors, the car works. It's all business. Doesn't the speed study trump?
I think so. I, I, I don't know.
That you can absolutely, if you want to use that, it does trump if you want to pick something.
Yeah.
But, but, just following what you said before, if we could validly designate that entire area from hospital all the way to the curb, south, or, if we could justify that, designating that Business District, James, from what you said before, I think, is that we could make that all twenty-five.
Yeah. And then there was the one thing I, we had discussion on was that continuity.
Then pass it back here.
You're not supposed to have a gash, like go from houses to businesses to houses.
Right. So there is, there is that.
You said that you would.
I forget how many feet it is, seven hundred feet?
You said that you would, read it when you came back here.
Seven hundred feet from south of Village Motors to the cable office that would be residential. And that, I don't think we could call it that as Business District. I don't, you, did you, you never did that.
Yeah, I, I got it somewhere, I talked with, in this file, I volunteered.
Do you think that whole, whole area could be designated?
I don't know that it can. I, I'm confident in saying from the square to Wool Street was over fifty percent commercial.
Right, I, I, yeah.
I think, from what I recall, getting from Wool Street to Walnut Street was within, was, is there, within three hundred feet of a Business District, you can extend that? Am I drawing, is that?
I can't remember that.
Because I think that's where we started getting, we couldn't get beyond that.
I, there, the definition of Business District, the, the second part of that definition is confusing. I'm not sure that I really understand.
Yeah, that's, that's where we got mixed up.
What you're talking about there.
Yeah.
And I don't know that that would get us in Business District. Okay, so I, I guess I have another question, okay? And I don't know where council's coming from on this, but I think, I know where Bob's coming from on this. Bob wants to be twenty-five from the hospital as far south as we can. And if as far south as we can is just south of Village Motors, then it would be then thirty-five from there, south to Wool Street, and then twenty-five from Wool Street into downtown, into the square. That's what I see as a possible scenario. Now there, we also have that nineteen fifty-four speed study that supports twenty-five all the way from Walnut Street, which is where the cable office is, north out of town, out to, to the remnants. So we have the fifty-four speed study, which conflicts with the speed study we just did. Does that fifty-four study then get trumped completely by the new speed study, or how does that work?
It's a good question. I probably want to reach out to Central Office for some additional guidance on that. No matter what you guys decide here, Bob will have to come to us for review again. I'm not sure which path you're going to take. Most, most options are going to be feasible, but we'll, we'll look at and make sure that twenty-five, thirty-five, twenty-five, jump a gap before. We would like some consistency there. And then again, I think the Business, it was meant to be the, like, the central Business District.
But if we use the, the Shoemaker theory, I'm going to call it.
Bob, you're famous.
This, the fifty-four speed study would support twenty-five from Walnut Street, the cable office, all the way north. So if that fifty-four speed study has any clout whatsoever, that would be a justification for it to be twenty-five. Now, the speed study we just did would be contrary to that, so I'm not sure, you know, what effect, does that sound like you.
I'm going to go out on a limb here, and I'm going to say that now that we've got a speed study that's not seventy years old, we're probably going to go off that.
I'm afraid that the age of that old wouldn't make the entrance of.
Yeah, but we didn't have the new one, but again, I think the old one would have had more clout. But yeah, now that we've got a new one, I don't think. And that's, I would go and get a second opinion from my peers at Central Office, get guidance.
So there would have been less traffic in the fifties. Less traffic. There'll be a lot more cars going through. And safety's not a, that sidewalk, safety cannot be considered into a speed limit?
Typically, if safety is considered in safety study as opposed to the speed limit studies, they're typically separate. Now, US limits too, the Federals, they do have a safety component, but that's, it's just a small component. I'm sure they would have pulled some crashes here to add it to your study. I didn't look at that part specifically. We had a number of injured crashes, oh, this is per second random page here, but three in the face.
Well, it's more for people walking on that sidewalk, which we've discussed, lifting, you know, hiring up the sidewalk, which then you're going to have people hit, that, hit the thing. So I don't know how that goes, but that sidewalk's pretty close to the, it's like on the road.
I'm also not that familiar with the sidewalks over there, picture of the street.
Essentially, whatever council decides is what you will take back, and then you guys will go over it and decide if that is feasible. Is that correct?
Yeah, so based on the chart here, local agency performs a speed study, see that collection, fill-out warrant spreadsheet, US limits to evaluation. For the, you have traffic engineers, man, you will, local agencies submit speed zone study to ODOT for review, ODOT reviews the study. And then does ODOT concur with their recommendation? So you're going to have the study, and you come up with your recommendation. Now, the study that you liked, so they gave you multiple options through there. And then if ODOT makes an alternate recommendation and collaborates with local agencies, determine mutual group upon speed limit. And then you, does local agency agree with the alternatives? If yes, then we document it, determine speed limit. And I'll guide you through the journalization process. For you guys, you would pass a resolution, and for me, that's some paperwork I fill out and put in the ODOT database for online. But if not, we circle back and we keep talking until we agree.
Myself, I'm just looking for continuity, as Andrea alluded to, more than anything else.
Bob, I, I agreed with you back last time we had this discussion, until I started driving twenty-five miles per hour from Jones Street till you hit Worcester Road. It was driving me nuts. And, and part of that is I've been driving it that way for almost twelve years. And, and I really tried to pull back, and I just felt like I was impeding the flow of traffic going twenty-five miles per hour.
Well, because everybody behind you is going the speed limit.
No, I, I did it at a time when nobody was behind me, and it, I was driving slow, and I just felt like I needed to pick it up until I hit the Worcester Road, until I hit that curve. Then I felt like twenty-five made sense. So I, I just real, I struggled to maintain that twenty-five miles per hour.
I mean, myself, what I know, the, traffic is increasing more and more through there.
I mean, myself, what I know, the, traffic is increasing more and more through there all the time. Just like thirty-nine coming in from the west. Where are all these people coming from?
I drove down South Washington Street Sunday, twenty-five miles an hour, had a car on my tail. Pulled over because they rode my twenty-five, where it's supposed to be. Pulled over, watched them fly down South Washington Street and then tailgated the car ahead.
Don't get me wrong, I had, there, there were times when I was driving twenty-five miles per hour, there were vehicles behind me and it didn't feel good. And there were times where I just did it on my own and there was nobody behind me and I felt like I was just driving too slow. It didn't feel normal. And I, I'm all for continuity, but, you know, I think, I think there comes a time too when, you know. You, you just feel in certain areas of the village like it's, it's safer to drive a little bit faster.
When it's thirty-five, people are driving forty and forty-one and forty-two.
Okay, and you know what? That's a good point, Andrea, that I think it kicks back to the enforcement.
Yeah, you bet, you bet.
So, and, and one thing that I always struggle with is when I read your report. And I'm thinking, how am I the expert on what I think should be the speed limit? Because I think one thing and then I look at the speed study and I'm thinking, you guys are the pros. You guys do this for a living. Why should I question the speed limit that you're recommending, you're recommending to, to the village? I, well, I, I keep coming back to that.
They had a couple things, uh, one back to the continuity, uh, I don't think, so there's, I guess, maybe two types of continuity we're talking about. One is jumping up and down consistently. And the other is, and that we're not necessarily in favor of, especially in short distances, quarter mile, half mile. Uh, but from ODOT's perspective, we're looking for, uh, more of a progression from out of town to center of town. Where you go from, you know, your rural speed limit fifty-five, you hit a corp limit typically which went to fifty. You get more of the urban developments, thirty-five, you get to central, twenty-two, progressively getting slower. And then if you leave town, the opposite happens, twenty-five, thirty-five, fifty, fifty-five, you get faster. So it's not that there's not a continuity, progressively slow down and then kind of speed back up as you're moving through the town. And sometimes you'll have a lot of towns, smaller towns even here, uh, and it might just jump from fifty-five to thirty-five or something. But if you have a little bit more distance, you have a pretty long road here in eighty-three and sixty-two, uh, to have those, that progression. So.
I'm gonna read part, and this is both of the speed studies that we've had, Carpen and Marty. This is what they say. Which is, to me, it sounds a little bit like the, the tail wagging the dog, but it's just a, it says, overall, it is important that posted speed limits are considered reasonable by a majority of drivers. Studies have shown that most drivers tend to drive at a speed with which they are comfortable. So raising or lowering the speed limit does not have a significant effect on speed. However, when the speed limit is set at a level which most drivers consider reasonable, the speed of vehicles is more uniform. Which has proven to be a safer traffic pattern. So.
That's what I was getting to, Bob, and I appreciate you reading that. Cause that's, that's how I felt when I was driving, you know, from Jones Street till you hit the curb there on Worcester Road.
So in other words, they don't, the thinking is of the speed study. And I, I gotta think that it's valid thinking, I mean, they're the, they're the experts, I guess. You shouldn't set a speed limit lower than what most drivers think is reasonable. Because if you do that, you're gonna have some people going the lower speed limit, but then other people that think that this is crazy. And we, I need to be one thirty-five, not twenty-five, I'm gonna pass on the W O line, which creates a safety problem. I'm not saying I agree with that, but that seems to be the theory of these speed studies. They, they look at the speeds and they say most drivers are going thirty-five miles an hour or maybe forty miles an hour. So the speed limit needs to be at least thirty-five or forty.
Well, and, and Brad, I had the same experience that you did. I, I tried the same thing. I drove north to south at twenty-five. At multiple times and like you said, I felt like I was holding up traffic. And it, you know, in, in the downtown, it made sense, but north of there and south of there, it felt like I was holding up traffic.
Yeah, it, it didn't feel right, no.
So does ODOT have to do a traffic study to lower speed limits? I know, I know on the, I know on the north side about seven years ago, the, the Glass Doctor, which is a business just north of the village. Had requested the speed limit get, because of the, the terrain and turning into the business. And it did get reduced to thirty-five miles an hour. Now the speed study here looks like it's raising it from thirty-five to forty-five.
And that's within the corporation limits?
Uh, part of it is, part of it is not. The, the Glass Doctor and stuff is outside of town.
Um, yeah, I guess if your first question, ODOT would have to follow this exact same process. We use the exact same standardized forms and we check with federal highways, the federal version, which is the US limit speed process. So both are included, uh, a lot of times we see two numbers that are only within five miles per hour of each other. And that's generally the range we're trying to stick to.
So and that was reduced, so it would have been a speed study.
There would have been, yeah, I would, I would have access to that. I'm not familiar with it off the top of my head, but it's there.
I just know the owner had contacted me at the time, asking if we would object to that. And I said, well, it's not in town, so, you know, what do you guys?
It goes fifty-five to thirty-five out there, doesn't it?
It's, it's not fifty-five in time to get north of Glass, just north of Glass.
Right, right, right.
But this would move it to forty-five.
Right.
And that's why I ask if, if there's another study out there for that.
For that section?
That section, not, not that it, I mean, part of it does, cause it does include the, the medical building area.
Well, then it would progress from fifty-five to forty-five to thirty-five if that was what council decided or, or fifty-five to thirty-five to twenty-five or whatever, whatever you guys decided.
Does, does ODOT consider variables like as you're heading north? Just before you get to the hospital, for example. There's, there's a, a new set of, new set, I shouldn't say new set, but there's a lot of condos being built up there. Does, does ODOT take into consideration or do they have any knowledge, do they consider the variables to know that there's, you know. Gonna be a more populated area of housing going in?
Like future?
Yes.
No, once that's done, then you come back and do this.
Another speed study?
Okay, so they don't take into consideration the process of those condos being built? But once they're completed, you're, you're saying that we would ask for another speed study or we could ask for another speed study?
I would think so, yeah, I think after the building's changed, then you could reevaluate and re-study.
But is, is traffic that would, I mean, what you're saying is there would be increased traffic coming in from a side, a side road in that, the area of the speed study? Is traffic coming in from a side, is that part of any of the factors in the speed study?
So when you put that out, here's our standard sheet here. It's done for every section of the road, uh, route name, beginning endpoints, uh, existing speed limits and the average daily traffic. And that's along with the actual road you're setting for the speed limit. And then you just go down and it's, again, it's, it's not so much about the safety, but it's about the actual geometry, what you're feeling when you're driving through the corridor. So that you have that driver expectation, so the speed limit coming into this town's gonna be the same as any other town, Sugar Creek, Billy, Dover. We got, no, so this is for the stretch of highway that you're analyzing, your number of houses, number of small businesses, number of apartments, condos. Medium businesses, major businesses, minor street intersections, major street intersections. So if there's going to be new streets, you know, that might change the variable here. And the more streets you have, the more congestion it's gonna be, simply is going to factor into the lower speed limits later. Number of signalized intersections and roundabouts, interchange ramps, the lane width and the shoulder width on the road, how wide it is. More narrow roads seem, uh, their traffic calming in themselves, cause they seem tight, you don't feel like you can go this fast. You get out on thirty-nine to the, to the east and it's wide open, it just feels like you can go this. You've got wide lanes, wide shoulders, nothing right along the buildings and stuff on the shoulders. And then, you know, we do have safety factor in here, you know, there are property damage only crashes, injury crashes, fatal crashes. Uh, the presence of honorable ru, road users, so that's your bicyclers, buggies, pedestrians, walking. Urban features, sidewalks, crosswalks, curb and gutter. Two big factors of the fifty percentile speed, that's a really big one, that's what the average number of people is going. From your, your lowest speed car or your highest speed car, who's in the middle and how fast are they going? The eighty-fifth percentile speed, so towards your fast end, that's typically around where the speed limit's gonna be set. It's normally around your eighty-fifth percentile speed. Uh, and then the ten mile per hour pace speed, that's the gap that is, the majority of your cars going down that road fit in this ten mile per hour pace speed. That's, if you, there's speeds up here, someone sat out there and they counted every speed of every car going through, it has to be at least a hundred cars. Tally it somewhere. I thought I saw it.
Yeah, right after the.
Oh, here we go. Yeah, so someone sat out there, tallied up all the speed, well, the cars had to be at least a hundred, looks like they did exactly a hundred. And then you take that, just chart them and, uh, wherever the most number of cars is between, you know, maybe thirty-two and forty-two. Shift it up to thirty-one and forty-one, is there less or more cars in that, wherever it is that ten mile per hour, that's that pace group of what's, what's going on out there. And then, oh, the last one's roadway characteristics and this one was considered a B two. There's a chart basically, if you have a straight road, nothing on the sides of it, that's an A one. If you're gonna get out for, to the western east, you have A ones. You get to C, that's a really windy country road. I'm not sure exactly where that would be around here, but, and then B's, a little bit winding. The number of one, two, three after is how congested, how many driveways along the way. So they were giving this one a B two, which is relatively, uh, the only thing less than that is B three and C. So that actually significantly drops the calculation down for the speed. Anything higher than B, B one or any of the As, but are suggested a higher speed limit. And then they factor all those in, uh, it's all objective, they all, every one of those values replaced with a number and then score them. So it's a very objective process, so that it's consistent across the state. And it's, uh, I think I, I told Nate when I was on come, Strasburg tried to do the definition thing. And we helped them with that and they extended their urban area to seven blocks in Strasburg. From downtown Strasburg closer to the interchange of seven-seven. It's seven blocks, it was currently like four or five blocks and they just rezoned to business. Um, and then they got a new mayor here January first and a new council. And the new mayor and council said, we don't like that, we'll go right back to thirty-five, so I've been told that's coming. So, and then you would ask me a question last time about, you guys are the ones that know this area, why don't you just let us pick it? And I think I got my answer through some life experience there that the next council might think the exact opposite. And not that anyone's wrong or right, but it's a different opinion. So, um, I definitely gonna lie heavier on the studies, cause that is subjective, they keep it objective and it keeps it consistent across the state. And, so, I've got a lot of tangents there.
I'm looking at the nineteen fifty-four speed study and whoever this evaluator was, and it was the evaluator's from ODOT. Harold Eckhart, engineer, Bureau of Traffic.
Can't say every minute?
Yeah.
You weren't around in fifty-four, were you? Bob was.
I was there. I probably fed him with a bottle on my knee or something. Now it says, okay, so they do take into account in this study, uh, the traffic that pulls onto the road. Okay, and talking about the, uh, the new housing, this one in there. Now, whenever this study was done, there was a flexible bus company there on Jones Street. There also were, I didn't know this, but Village Motors used to be a Ford garage and then there was a Buick, Osmeal, Osmele garage. And I, I don't know if it's the same establishment or two different establishments, they had the hospital there. But one of the things that, uh, this is what he says. There are sixty employees' cars, and I think he must be talking about flexible. There are sixty employees' cars and some trucks, uh, which use Jones Street. The traffic from the state highway and, oh, the, the, okay, so the state highway garage, was the state highway garage where the village garage is now? Okay, and then, um. The county highway garage was, was flexible, the state highway garage and the county garage. That all emptied out onto the road. So I guess, you know, that, that was a consideration. To gain access to state routes at seventy-six. Billboard or hinder site north from Jones Street. So anyway, they recommended twenty-five. Now, let me read this resolution from the village council that says, uh. We believe that the speed limit of thirty-five is greater than reasonable and safe under the conditions found to exist at such location. And then it says resolved that, um, uh, it's referred to the, ODOT to determine whether or not it's safe. So it's pretty obvious to ODOT, the village council wanted the speed limit to be reduced from thirty-five to twenty-five. Now, all the wheels were greased, there's a resolution in here, um, that says that the mayor. All the signs were changed from thirty-five to twenty-five. And then evidently somebody changed their mind. And either the signs were not put up or the signs were changed. And there's no documentation on how that happened or how it didn't happen that the signs weren't put up. So that's where we are.
And there was a question that sometime in the eighties where the village asked ODOT if that twenty-five was still journalized. And a guy, two before me, who was like the first to talk to me, I'll tell you, he said in his email, yes, it's still journalized.
And it's still valid, the speed study is still valid. But they thought, ODOT thought it was twenty-five this whole time.
Right, and I have to.
And I think that's.
The speed zone revision documentation, yes, was still valid, and it still is technically valid.
So my question is, is the speed limit twenty-five or thirty-five right now?
Well, that was how we started that six months ago, is ODOT has to generalize the twenty-five.
So signs went up, that went, that signs went up for thirty-five and we don't know how that happened.
Correct.
Or they might have always been thirty-five and never changed to twenty-five as it says that they were.
So back then, people didn't follow ODOT. And back then, um, they took into consideration things that came on to, which in the south. I mean, so we build up south. We build up. And, um. You know, a lot of times on a Friday, you're going thirty-five through town, you're going fifteen. And it's backed up all the way to the end and it's taking you half an hour to get through town. Now, my feelings about that, that upsets me, but what am I gonna do? Go around all the other traffic? I mean, I, this is amazing to me, we can take studies, I mean, studies were done over COVID, so don't get me started, but I, I just, I just. This is so upsetting to me, how all this happened. God lived her twenty-seven years.
What studies were done during COVID?
Just, I'm just saying, like, about studies that get done of things.
So here's what I would propose. I say the six members of council decide what you want the speed limits to be. We do a resolution to that effect, to change it how you want it to be. Then they have to review it and they have to either approve it or not. And then we'll go from there. And it could be a, you know, give and take type thing that he was talking about.
One thing for, just for the, I did recently, uh, I'm on statewide, uh, district, district speed zone coordinator. I'm our district speed zone for the seven counties I'm over. zone coordinator, I'm our district speed zone for the seven counties I live over, I mentioned to that committee that I've got a lot of questions about business in urban districts, and it seemed very unclear, and I did seek further guidance from them, I think you as a lawyer and knowing laws, they're tricky, and I think a lot of people are going to touch that right now, because it is kind of messy, and we have a lot of places of confusion. But I will, you know, whatever you guys come back with, I'm not, I'm gonna go to, to my ODOTers that have more experience and for guidance to help me with this too, so.
The only criticism I have of this speed limit, two speed limit studies that we've gotten, is that they only seem to concentrate on how fast traffic moves now. Not how fast it should move, but how fast it does move, and their argument is that, well, you need to keep it going at that speed, otherwise you're gonna have people, you know, like Andrew was talking about, tailgating and, you know, wanting to get around, and, you know, that sort of thing.
I've had some time thinking about that since our last meeting, and when we're talking about using the speed data from the cars, is there any time when you're driving or in this room, where you're going a speed you don't feel comfortable with? Like, when you're driving down these roads, when you're going thirty-five to forty, are you going that because you feel comfortable going that?
I tried going around the curve thirty-five, and I was terrified. That, that, that scared me.
Yes.
That was too much.
Because that's signed twenty mile per hour.
But that's not for that road.
That's for the curve that you said you scared you of.
That's, that's what we want that curve to be, it's thirty-five right now.
An advisor's speed plaque, though, is set up on any curve that is not intended to meet the speed limit.
Well, I tried thirty-two, and thirty wasn't, twenty-five is a, is a safe speed around that curve.
Here we have it, signed as twenty and twenty-five for advisor speeds. You don't want the whole corridor to be jumping down.
Right, no, no, but I'm saying that I, I try to go faster there, and the same to the south, and that curve on the south, it, it's just as scary.
Is it having a sixty-five right now?
Huh?
For advisor speeds?
I don't think we do.
I think so.
No.
There's no yellow sign there for that.
No, no.
I usually do, right there.
Sort of one.
Because it goes down.
I live right there.
And I can tell you for a fact, just looking out my window and watching the traffic come through there through all aspects of the day, early in the morning, you'll have truckers flying down a hill upwards of forty-five, fifty miles an hour, because there's no officer sitting down there pulling over. And then it'll gradually slow down as, you know, the sun comes up. My biggest problem with it is, for myself and my wife, on deep street is where our driveway sits, there's also another apartment-type situation there, multiple people that live there. We have to turn on deep street in order to get into our driveways. When we turn, I actually turn my turn signal on a lot further back in order to make that turn, because there's people that feel comfortable, quote unquote, going much faster down that hill than they should, and nine times out of ten, they're not paying attention. And the number of horn honks, because people are not paying attention and almost rear into somebody there, not full-blown accidents, but potential accidents, it's unreal. And every time I know I come down that hill to get on the deep street and get into my driveway, when my wife is driving, trying to turn on the deep street to get in that driveway, we literally brace ourselves in our seats, waiting for the person that's not paying attention behind us, to plow into us and throw us into the wide part of the intersection, because that's how fast people are coming down that thing. Because that's what they feel comfortable driving. I think when it comes to something like that, you kind of have to throw that out the window because of the stuff where you have to turn to the left or turn to the right. Because when you have people like myself sitting there bracing ourselves every time you need to make that turn, that's a bit ridiculous. And the thing is, there's more than just my wife and I and the people that live there turning on the deep street, because what they'll do is, oh, look down that street, going out, and they'll see if there's a lot of traffic, they may not want to go down that way, and if there's an accident, they won't want to go that way, they'll turn and use deep street as a main thoroughfare to go back and around, and find a way to avoid anything that's down there.
Well, they're doing that all over town. I live right there, so I can tell you, so when they're coming down, I have bitter end it, so I can tell you that, they're coming down, just what he said. I can also tell you that sometimes to avoid hitting me, they've actually jumped the thing and gone over to where there's the thing now, so, I can tell you that, I live there. And, and it's, 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 you're afraid you're gonna get a render when you're pointed to my driveway, I can be able to point to my driveway, they're coming down that thing.
And it's not just coming down, it's coming up it as well, because you'll have those truckers wanting to try to get up speed to try to go up that hill, which honestly makes me laugh, because they've got gears in those trucks. If they can't get that truck up that hill, then they need to get their CDL built. Because when there is a traffic jam up, and the speeds are slow, and there's people waiting out there, the mayor's seen it, Andrea's seen it, I've seen it, you'll have people sitting on that hill waiting to go up, and those truckers, they've gotta go up, they've gotta go slow, so there's no reason for them to be gunning it to run out that hill either. That speed in that area needs to be slower, because also in South Washington, when they're looking up to get on to that, you almost have to gun it to run it, because you've got people coming down that hill also so fast, that if they're not paying attention, again, you're looking at a potential side sway for another accident down there. So, I can't speak to what they're saying, you know, they may feel comfortable flying through town in certain spots, but myself, I drive in Canton a lot, because that's where I work, and in a lot of those areas, it's twenty-five miles an hour, maybe it's one of those things where they're more comfortable driving that fast, but in a lot of these places, especially between where we're talking about, when you land down to the other, twenty-five is more than enough. Because overall, when you look at how much time you're spending, even though you're going a few, few miles below, slower, you're not getting anywhere that much faster or that much later, when it comes down to it. The average speed in my car, driving from here to Canton and back, is anywhere between thirty-five and thirty-eight miles an hour. And I drive two forty-one, and thirty in seventy-seven, so.
Nate, what did I tell you? You were surprised what one end of was to the other, and if you did the two speeds, I don't know what was me. Do you remember that?
Oh, difference if there was no traffic.
Yeah, it was, yeah. How long it took you? It, it's not as long as you think, and it's not as much time you're saving.
Right, you said it was two or three minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, just pointing clarification, I thought, Kelly, that you were talking about, that curve took the north.
I was, I was.
And I think that's what Dave was talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's bad to the north.
Yeah, the south is bad, they're both bad.
And if you're sitting, instead they come around.
Right.
When the semis come down, if you're sitting to go up South Wash, there, they hug that line. They hug the, going around that curve.
The speed study did on outside, say, thirty, through that curve, so you have to study for that.
Thirty-five, thirty, yeah, well, now go forty.
So, you're not, tell me, is it not for people's speed?
So, I, I just wanna, okay, so, let's, let's switch gears to south this way.
Why don't we just deal with north, and I'd like to make a motion that we make it twenty-five miles an hour up to Old Street, to the curve, thirty-five from there, I don't like that it's forty-five. If you look at scenario one, I don't like that it's forty-five from before the medical building on, so I guess my motion would be to thirty-five to that point, entering zone four, but make a recommendation for forty miles an hour, not forty-five miles an hour, compromise between the, the two.
So, what now, speed limit's up in a deal.
Twenty-five, twenty-five to Old Street curve.
Okay.
Extending to Business District, thirty-five to the point that Zone Four starts, which is, looks like just north of Marchan Street.
Of what?
Marchan Street.
Okay.
And then it's Zone Four in the studies recommending forty-five, but I would, my motion would be to make it forty, which would be five miles an hour less, but still within a reasonable.
Tom, if you thought that Glass Doctor had requested it to be lowered, do you think they would take issue with that being raised in front of them again?
Well, we're only, we're only dealing with the village, so hopefully he can find a speed study, but I don't reflect that.
So, in this, in this case, it would go to forty, and then drop back to thirty-five up around Glass Doctor.
I mean, if we were to make it thirty-five, if we can do that, if you think that'll be considered by dropping it ten miles an hour below for that small section, then, then I would make a motion from, from the curve north to the limits to be thirty-five, or wherever ODOT wants to stop the thirty-five, but from the county, I don't care, that's up to them. I'd be happy, I mean, I'd be happier that it was thirty-five.
Right.
I was just trying to compromise based on the speed study that we're confronted with.
So, scenario four in the speed study.
Yeah.
So, is your motion for twenty-five to thirty-five to forty, or twenty-five to thirty-five on?
Well, considering that, I would say twenty-five to the curve.
To all.
Thirty-five to the village limits, and then ODOT can do with what they want out by the Glass Doctor.
I have one comment, why don't you make it at the Y, start at twenty-five, both Washington and Clay, so.
Because we have two different speed studies, and I'd like to stay within the speed studies.
But, it, that is just, you know, confusing to people like we went through, with, they got issued tickets, you know, for the twenty-five, we, you know, reimbursed them for that, it'd just be, you know, copacetic to have them right there together, it's just not very many feet.
But can we extend out that far? I thought it was three hundred feet, or right near three hundred feet.
I don't, I don't know, I'd have to look at it.
That's powerful.
Can't you consider the building there, that's on Clay Street?
Well, I mean, that's the Village Motors Body Shop property, that fronts on Worcester Road, it's commercial, and then the gas company owns a vacant lot.
That goes to the point.
Can we consider that commercial even if it's vacant?
What was it?
Gas company owns it.
I don't think so. I mean, if you go to the property.
That would be us, there, that would be us to Wallace Street.
The tax map is gonna show it's a business.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, that's what you would count that as?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing there, it's vacant.
It's not a resident, right?
Uh-uh.
Fair enough.
So, why do I thirty-five, or twenty-five? Thirty-five?
So, twenty-five when it starts South Clay Street, and thirty-five north.
Oh, Worcester Road.
Worcester Road.
That at least starts.
Yeah.
I don't want to further complicate this, but the speed study starts further south than that, so we're, we're jumping into the.
Yeah.
Speed study area with our Business District, is that gonna throw up any red flags?
Well, that's what I just, that's what I asked you early on, if, if we designate a Business District, you know, to Old Street, or wherever it is that you say, you know, from, from Clinton, which is where it is now, north to Old Street, if we say that's Business District, and therefore it's twenty-five, I think Dave said that trumps the speed study.
I, I, I think.
Or it'll, it'll hold weight with them both.
When I say trumps, I think that's where the, the lower of the, you guys get to choose, you have both, and I think you can, I, I think there'll be some, yeah, I think if you want to make your business district that far, you can document that it is, that's, you can set it as that, and that's, that's the law.
So, whatever council decides, we can send to you, and then you guys will make, you'll look at it and say yes or no?
Yeah, and we, and we may make it tweak on one end of the other, and shift it to a certain road or something. Kind of getting a feeling that you might have it twenty-five from curve to curve through your Business District, twenty-five.
From Washington Street to Washington Street.
I don't know that we're gonna get Business District south of this.
I think so.
I, I, you know, I, I just don't know, I mean, I used to live right there too, I, it's not business, it's residential, unfortunately.
Now, you got Hyrnes.
Got Hyrnes, yeah.
The church. Kick that off to Newton, that only gets you to Newton.
And that's where it is.
But the fact of the matter is, they're gonna take into account whatever council decides.
Yeah.
So, we're not, we don't have to discuss, council just needs to make a decision, and then you guys say yes or no, and we go back to the drawing board, or we go for it.
Yep, and I, I'll add one more thing, food for thought here, on the end of the zone versus suggested the forty-five, so on the end of that sheet, after you go down this whole criteria, and it's very objective.
Now, which one are you looking at first?
Just in general, or are you just, just for north? I'm talking the very north end of town.
Yeah, okay.
So, this sheet here, and back to where, this is just an example, when we did the split jurisdictions on outside of Liza, where the city was the one side and we were the other side, and this additional considerations and comments, this is where, that thing, my comment there was, we're matching the other side of the road to be thirty-five to match the new status, so we have same speed level besides. So, one of the things that is in our traffic year manual, is that new zone should be a half mile long, that's in there as guidance. This last section is only three tenths of a mile, we're putting the thirty-five from the speed study and the corp limit, I, I drove this stretch here before the meeting to kind of get a feel for what we were gonna talk about, that's so short, I, I would put the comment in there, if this is something you guys want to pay, thirty-five from your curve up here to the outside of town. And the justification, if that's about you want to go, would be, speed zones are supposed to be a half mile long, so you have progression, but at the same time, you have to have time to be in that progression, you know, when you go from fifty-five to forty-five to thirty-five, yeah, if you make that jump, if you only want a half mile, you're still just progressing down to thirty-five. So, there is some room from that standard of having a half mile zone for your new zones, that if you guys decided you would like to propose thirty-five from there to the curve, even though it's a little bit against the study, from ODOT's standpoint, that's where I'd come back and say, yeah, that is against the study, but we also don't want a zone less than a half mile.
And we're matching what you have as outside of the jurisdiction, which is thirty-five.
You guess I'm not a hundred percent sure that line is, because I went past the hospital and ended up jumping to fifty-five, and didn't see a zone in the middle.
The, the Glass Doctor, I don't know if he saw the business after, after you dropped down over the hill, it's thirty-five from there into, into town.
For some reason, I think the sign's missing.
I give up, I give up.
I remember when there was a forty-five mile long.
Okay, we have a motion, Tom, what was your motion? Can you please repeat that?
It's twenty-five from Washington Street to Washington Street, whether it's Worcester Road or Clay Street, so that section, now we can't.
Well, do, do you want to just do north? Let's, let's do north and get north done, so we can feel like we've accomplished.
My motion is from the curve on Old Street to the corporation limit, it's thirty-five miles an hour.
Okay.
From the curve south, we extend our Business District to twenty-five miles an hour.
So, it's what?
Twenty-five, to the square.
I will second that.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Kalog?
Aye.
I haven't decided.
That's neat.
She maker?
Aye.
Pullin?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Kalog?
No.
Let, let me just ask a question, I think part of this motion is that we're extending the Business District from Clinton to the curve, beyond, just go beyond the curve, right? That's part of the motion?
Right.
Okay, just wanted to mention.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Business District goes to the curve, because we're within that three hundred feet that we discussed before, and we have Park National, we have the.
We have that extra footage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which, which we do not have that option going south, right?
Correct.
There's open ground, like, the park doesn't count, right?
I don't know.
I mean, that's what I read that.
Yeah, I don't believe, like, South Clay Street, we have the park, our park, I believe that's not, you don't include those by the definition of determining what's commercial or residential.
I'd have to check on that, I'm not sure which one that falls in there.
Okay, let me, let me ask this, we do not have a speed study from the, the square south until we get to down, down over the hill.
No, that, no, we have a speed study.
That's the one from my cover.
We have a speed study.
Where's the one, what's the northernmost part of that?
The square.
Square.
Yeah, yeah, we have that.
Never mind.
We have that.
I was thinking we wouldn't have a contrary speed study, so in order to make this twenty, I just want to see the obstacles here, from Adams Street south to around the corner, we have to go contrary to a existing speed study, and how do we do that?
I guess the only way to not pick something that's in the range of these ODOT forms and US 02 calculations.
Is the range ten miles per hour.
That was, that was. That was, that was the, the ten mile per hour pace.
Okay.
So here's the, you know, the calculates for that section, where a lot of thirties, thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-five, a lot of thirties, so. So to go against that, you have to be able to match the pre-traffic speed limit of the, or, of business district. That's the only way you're gonna be down to twenty-five there.
And we, like we are, when it meets that.
I mean, can we take the twenty-five as far south as we can legally, and then have caution signage for the curves?
We can have caution signs anytime. It's less, if the speed limit is thirty-five, and the curve designed, like, if you take the curve, it's thirty, it's appropriate speed, you can put a thirty mile per hour caution sign. Anytime it's five miles per hour or more difference.
I mean, if we can't make that curve twenty-five, that's probably our best option, is caution signage to at least put it in people's mind if they need to slow down for that curve.
Absolutely. And we could, I can run, I did the other ones actually, but I didn't realize, I thought from the last meeting, we wanted those, and then I realized they're already out there. For two forty-one, had some really sharp curves on two forty-one, but those were good sign, but it was a good check for me, because it's the first time I've used the tool, and I have the same number, so I was happy. They were dropped down to fifteen miles per hour, I think, so.
So what's the furthest distance south? Is it Hiberns, or is it the Lutheran Church? What is it?
Lutheran Church.
Lutheran Church.
I should've put a law office in our house, huh?
They're, all monique.
The Lutheran Church owns the parsonage right beside my house.
Yeah, yeah.
If we're going with what business owns what, the Lutheran Church owns the parsonage beside me. So that's Lutheran Church.
Is there a difference between a speed study and just a traffic study?
Yeah, I think the traffic study is gonna be more, it counts, like, the volume of traffic, how returning lanes you're gonna be having.
So they would determine speed limits too then, or could?
No, that, that would be separate. So we've got, basically, I've got traffic impact studies, which are like, if a new business is coming in. And, and you wanna see what kind of impact that's gonna have, and they're permitting, or do you make, throw enough vehicles out of these roads, it's like, oh, we need a traffic signal there now. So, you know, that might be part of their permit, yeah, you can come build here, but to access our road, which I have a right to do, you have to use all the traffic signal. Or turn lane, left dropout lane, or right dropout lane. So that's a traffic impact study. Traffic safety study, we're gonna be looking at the crashes, and then, just, uh, speed study, we're, we're looking at the, the speeds specifically, and the geometry associated with.
If we were to suggest to you that we would like it to be twenty-five from the square to the curb south, and then whatever council decides after the curve. Then you take that back and discuss it. The worst you could say is come back and say, nope, we can't do that, right?
Right.
The best you could say is, yeah, sounds good to us, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And right now, you're suggesting that the twenty-five stop at, what, the lot by the Presbyterian Church? That's as far sound, or the Lutheran Church, I'm sorry.
A little bit further sound.
That's, that's where.
I watched the weather, I mean, I went to Walmart, Clay County, I don't know exactly what it was saying, I don't remember.
It's, it's, when you're just starting down the hill, on the left-hand side, if you're going south, on the left-hand side, there's a church, the Lutheran church. And then there's church, then there's a parking lot, and then the parsonage.
The parsonage belongs to the church, uh-huh. And then there are three houses, and then a park.
And, yeah, the park, uh, might be taken into consideration too, as far as a commercial.
I just think that having people speed up right before the park is dangerous. And if we can just extend it down to around that curve, it would be safer for not only everyone that lives on that street trying to get off and on, because it's already bad enough. But for people, because everybody parks at the Lutheran church and walks down there.
Well, and it's, it doesn't make sense to speed up before the park, but also right before you head down the hill and down to the sharp curve.
Yes, and that, with the sharp curve, right, right.
Where, if that's the limit you're taking, keep your thirty-five on that straight stretch down there, and running into those trip, that's where I could say in that additional consideration, yeah, we don't have to build up here. But we're signed already for an advisory speed, and I can go to the speed curve to see if it isn't twenty-five there, and where it's that, that sign. Because if the advisor's speed is twenty-five, and we're extending the zone, I think that's worth that consideration, so.
Well, most of the people that drive that road know they live here.
Yeah.
They know what they're.
So, so I think it would be, it would behoove us to just say to the curve. That's just my opinion.
Like you said, the worst they can do is come back and say that.
And say, no, right.
Maybe we get thirty.
Right.
Maybe we get thirty.
Right, right.
So I'll make a motion from the square to the, to Washington Street, twenty-five miles an hour, thirty-five miles an hour from there, to the, well, to the corporation.
I'll second.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Kellogg?
I'm still saying no to everything. No.
Um, Shoemaker?
No.
Pullen?
No.
Aye.
Anything else on that? I'm gonna move on.
Okay.
Uh, resurfacing, nothing really exciting going on there. I am working with AEP, we met, looked at the whole relocation, they've got their engineers working on that for the East Jones intersection. Uh, gonna, assuming there's no other hiccups, I'm gonna go ahead and place the order for the case wheeled loader this week. Prices were revised, and there's still thirty thousand dollar difference between CAT and case, both great machines, but I, you know, I think for our purposes, the case will do just fine. Nothing on the street department building. We picked up the truck today, up at Palata, the utility department truck, and dropped that off at Troutman for the upfitting. Nothing on our building. As we mentioned earlier, earlier, the ODNR tree planting was moved to the nineteenth. And that was just due to an issue of getting the trees from the nursery. Nineteenth at one o'clock up at Deer Run. Still open on the street department opening, accepting applications, they're still trickling in. Got a park request, park use request for Airport Park, Grace Church is requesting permission for their annual Easter egg hunt, or, I'm sorry, we did that last time, didn't we? The, uh, great, that was a different church. Grace Church is requesting Airport Park for a lunch program for kids this summer. Every Friday from eleven to one, beginning May thirty-first, running through August ninth. We wouldn't need a motion on that if you.
Are they taking older kids?
I have no idea.
Question it.
Second.
Pullen?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
If you need lunch, come see me, Bob, I'll take it.
I'll, I'll take you up on that.
I'm gonna regret that. Uh, AEP also is working on the streetlights on Elm, East Jones, and Port Washington, adding, there are ten lights on East Jones Street. They're adding five, changing five of the existing out to LED, and then adding five new. Port Washington, there's six lights, two will be changed over to LED, adding four new, and then Elm Drive is three new lights. Millersburg Electrics up at Deer Run, working on the underground for the electrical, to the amphitheater pavilion, uh, the basketball court area. They're hoping they'll be out of here this week, but depending on tomorrow's monsoons, we'll see what happens. And then we also had a credit request come in today. I copied it for everybody, you should have a copy of it. Uh, three sixty South Crawford Street, house has been empty, realtor went to check on it and discovered a water leak, flooded the basement. We went up and verified that the water didn't go down the sewer, so the requested credit is for one oh one, one, one hundred and one dollars and five cents for the sewer portion of the bill. And normally, we'd probably wait till the next meeting, but they have the closing scheduled for first of April. So we're hoping to get this taken care of before closing.
I'll second.
Pullen?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief?
The only thing I have is everybody's emails are set up now, um, to the village, so the millerburghigh.com. I guess mentioning, I haven't mentioned it before, but with the next council meeting, that'll be the afternoon in the eclipse. Just a reminder, people, don't stare at it with your naked eye, use your approved, um, your approved safety glasses that they have a rump that you can get. If you're gonna stop and look at it, use approved parking spots. We're not expecting anything crazy, but just traveling through is what everybody seems to be thinking we're gonna get, so. Have no idea what it'd be like. And then something for executive session.
Thank you. Bobby?
Nothing.
Okay. Karen? Thank you. Bob?
I don't have anything, thank you.
No, thank you. Um, we have a police committee meeting this week on the twenty-eighth at seven. If you haven't RSVP'd for the infrastructure grant meeting at the fairgrounds, you need to get that done. We have April tenth planning and zoning meeting at six thirty, and April seventeenth is the bicentennial meeting at six at the chamber. Those are the two meetings that are not on the list. Um, okay. So I met with Mark Bowley and Taylor Sigler this past week to discuss working in conjunction with the historical society, HDM, and the village. Kind of so that we can get everything working together. And we came up with a really great Dickens Christmas idea for two weekends, one in November and one in December for the downtown, to work in coordination with the Dickens Christmas that is going to be happening at the, um, his, uh, at the Victorian house. So we'll have some, some people dress up and be in the stores those weekends, talking about the history of the buildings. So I think that'll be exciting and neat. We'd kinda like to get some horse drawn carriage and things like that, so, to bring people into the downtown. We had two committee meetings. We had the Tree City Committee, Committee Meeting meet. How did that go?
Uh, went well, went la, it was last week. We finalized everything for the Arbor Day celebration on April twenty-sixth. And then we started, uh, we're going to be collecting numbers for costs and difficulty of, uh, replacing some street trees in the downtown.
That's great. Thank you. And the Audit Finance Committee met, Tom?
We met, and I apologize, we did not get the minutes out. I'd like to hold this until we can get the meeting minutes out for the next council meeting, so they can see it. So if anybody has any questions, we have an opportunity to ask them.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you. Um, we have legislation, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero seven. I'm gonna read it by title only, and then we'll talk about it. A supplemental appro, appropriation for the general fund and declaring an emergency. Are there any questions on this? No? Do we have a motion to suspend the second and third readings?
I'll make that motion.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Hofst, Hofstadter?
Aye.
Khan?
Aye.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Khan? That was Hofstadter, my, my dad. Hofstadter?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kellogg?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Aye.
Pullen?
Aye.
And Khan?
Aye.
Okay, any old business?
I had a chance to, I guess, just to talk about your park a little bit. I went down last Friday with Rod Arnold and, and Pat Mallor, and I wanted to take a look at the concession stand and the restrooms down there. Actually found the, the restrooms to be in fairly decent shape, and with the exception of some cosmetic issues, paint on the inside and outside. You know, it was the only thing that I thought was really needed. Uh, the storage area for the, for the tractor, uh, needs some TLC. Needs to be organized, probably cleaned out. Also went to the concession stand, I thought that the building was, it, it looked, looked decent on the outside, uh, with the exception of some cosmetic issues too. Inside I was concerned about. Um, inside was, was kind of a dumping ground for stuff. And I, I know that there's been a suggestion for, um, placing another window at a different location of the concession stand. And I, I'd like to see the, the inside of that building cleaned up. It's gonna have to be cleaned up anyway before any window could ever be put in there. But, um, it just, I took pictures, I was not real happy with the way it looked. So there, there needs to be some TLC, um, inside that building, um, obviously before any window could be placed in there. And I understand the need for the, the window location on the concession stand, but, uh, it needs to be cleaned out, cleaned up. The sooner the better, so. But I, I wanted to follow up too. We, we took some measurements, and it was, it was apparent that you could put an additional, not just two pickleball courts in like I had originally thought would be the max, but you could put an additional two, two more in there, so a total of four. And there was some talk about maybe turning the basketball hoops, um, in the opposite direction, and just maybe putting concrete down. But that's, that's another discussion. I just wanted to report that, uh, I did follow up on, on the buildings, and to try to visualize some potential, you know, for the hardscape area that's, that's already existing down there. And, uh, I'd like to get together with the Parks Committee again here, maybe in a couple weeks or so. And, uh, maybe after we get the estimates back, if we have any idea how long that's, that's going to take, but maybe push that, push that along a little bit. So, but that's the only thing else that I wanted to report on down at the park.
That sounds great. Thank you. Maybe we could do a cleanup day, that'd be nice.
And I think, oh, I was planning on, you'd sent me those pictures, and I'll, I'll talk to the, I think it's mostly softball, so I'll talk to the person, and, I think it's more just off-season storage, and it's convenient to put it there for them. I'm sure as the season opens up, they were gonna clean it out, looking at what was there. I don't think that's the condition of it during the season, so.
I was, I was very displeased at the way it looked, and I, the, the scoreboard, um, mechanism was on the floor. And I didn't think it should've been on the floor. It's just, it was a mess in there. And so however it was left, it needs to be cleaned up, tidied up. The building has potential. It just, yeah, for whatever reason, it was, it was left the way it, it was. I don't think anybody really knew what it was gonna look like when we opened the door, but, um, it was bad enough that I felt like I needed to take pictures. So, but, um, and I understand the issue with the, the change in the window, but you couldn't even put the window in there without gutting that place out, cleaning it out, so, but. And I, I'm sure that whoever you need to contact may well.
Yeah.
Get in there and take things cleaned up.
Yep.
It looks that way all year. I mean, it, it's dismal.
Here's the thing, Villa Jones had property, and we turn that over to the people that decide to run the concession stand or whatever. And, and that's, that's what we should do. We should let them, you know, take that over and, and use it for, for its intended purpose. But the way that it was seen last Friday was very disheartening to me, so. And, and the same with the restroom facilities. There's, there's, there's an area in the back where they, they put the tractor, and they put some, some of the equipment, and it just needs to be cleaned out, organized. And somebody just needs to put a little, um, work into that. It could be a nice little area to store things, so.
Any other old business? New business? I had a couple questions on chickens this week. Everybody wants to know if they can have chickens. Yes, you can have chickens, you just can't paint them. That's the rule. Who painted their chickens for us to have that? It's a legitimate ordinance. It's crazy. Anyway, um, the other thing that I wanted to tell you guys, I don't know if we talked about this already or not, but I need to get it off my stack. The Health Department would like to put in some, um, exercise equipment for senior citizens at the Clay Street Park, just like they did down at, um, Deer Run. And they're willing to purchase the equipment if we are willing to install the equipment and take care of room equipment. So it's kind of like the same thing as they, what they did down Airport Park. And, um, evidently, they have a lot of grant money and they're excited to spend it. So if they want to spend it on parks, I'm happy to spend it on parks. So I just wanted to bring that up to you guys and see if that's something that you're interested in doing.
Absolutely.
It's a good idea, but what about Airport Park? There's more room.
We might be able to get some more at Airport Park. She, when I was at the Health District meeting, she asked, anybody who has a park, come see me. Because she was handing these out because she wants to put equipment. So, I mean, we can ask them if we can put it at both parks. I don't see why, if they're, if they've got money to, to spend, we can spend it for them.
Sounds good.
Is that, is that good with everybody? Okay. The other thing that I have is the Historical Society is doing an afternoon tea with Teddy Roosevelt. So they have a guy that's going to dress up and be Teddy Roosevelt. It's Saturday, April twentieth, from one to three at the Castle Club, which is the, the building right beside the Victorian House. And, um, so there, it's going to be a, an afternoon tea. So if anybody would like to do that, I think it'll be something really fun. Okay, are there any visitors wish to address, council? No? You've been here long enough, huh? Okay. All right, I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss the details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body or a public office.
Second.
Pullen?
Aye.
Hofstadter?
Aye.
Excuse me, Kellogg?
Yes.
She maker?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
And Khan?